Okay, could I ask you to please take your seats? We're going to get started. Welcome, and thank you for coming to the special town meeting. For those of you who do not know me, I am Roger Smirage, your town moderator. We only have a few warrant articles to address today. Nevertheless, I thank you for taking time out of your Saturday to participate in this important part of the democratic process. Before we get started, there are a few housekeeping matters that we need to address. First, today's meeting is being broadcast live and also being recorded. Second, please note that any voters not in the designated voting areas will not be counted by me or, if necessary, our tellers. All voters must remain within the gymnasium so that I can see everyone and be able to declare the votes. At this time, I'd ask everyone to please either silence or put your phones on vibrate just so that we don't have any interruptions during the course of the meeting. Before we proceed, a few introductions are in order. In addition to myself, to my left up on stage, we have Town Council Lauren Goldberg and Executive Assistant to the Town Administrator Michelle McGovern. Seated in front of me are Town Administrator Steve Pullos and two members of the Select Board, Chair Gary Cheeseman and Vice Chair Diane Buco. Peter Clay is unfortunately not able to be with us this afternoon. Seated in front of the stage to my left, we have the Finance Advisory Committee, the committee which does presently have a vacancy that we are looking to fill if anyone's interested. Currently consists of Chair Jim Purdy, Susan Mailin, Scott Schoenberger, and Deidra Parati. They are joined by Jamie Cologne, our Finance Director and Town Accountant. Also in attendance is our School Committee Chair Dana Lallara and Committee Members, let's see who's here, Jennifer Carr, Amy Kuhnberger, and I see Julia Campbell. With the School Committee are Superintendent Eric Tracy. I don't see Vinnie here today, but we have Mr. Tracy who will be speaking later this afternoon. Next, could I please ask all residents that are able and willing to rise for the Pledge I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would also ask that, in light of recent events this week, both down in the southern part of our country and what's going on in Ukraine, that we just take a brief moment Thank you. Next, I want to thank the following: Town Hall staff for helping to organize and execute another Safe Town Meeting this afternoon. In particular, I would like to thank Town Administrator Steve Pullos, Executive Assistant to the Town Administrator Michelle McGovern, interim Town Clerk Patricia Brown, Finance Director Jamie Cologne, Director of Public Works Rich Souza, Facility Manager Michael Hardy, the members of the Select Board, and the members of the Finance and Advisory Committee for the time and attention they have put into preparing for today. Their efforts, along with the town's department heads and staff leading up to town meeting, are always appreciated. Next, I would like to thank the people who are assisting with the check-in process and any vote counting should that be necessary. They are Board of Registrar members Pat Purdy, Hillie Ebling, and Christine Burns, as well as election workers Judith Bobriski, Dorothy Gowdy, Chris Petru, Stevie Quinn, and David Seminsby. I would now like to acknowledge Senators Bruce Tar and Representative Jamie Belcedo. They have been keeping the Select Board, Finance Committee, and School Committee up to date with the information from Beacon Hill, and we thank them for their advocacy and support. Although typically only Wenham residents are permitted to speak at town meeting, I'd like to give Senator Tar and Representative Belcedo roughly five minutes apiece to update the residents on any developments from the State House. As such, the moderator recognizes Senator Bruce Tar.
Well, thank you, Mr. Moderator, and through you to town meeting. It's great to be here with you today, and I appreciate the opportunity to share a few words and also to be here with two legislative colleagues, not only Representative Belcedo, but also Representative Cairns. And we do appreciate the chance to give you a brief update from Beacon Hill. And I do think, Mr. Moderator, that it's ironic that the rain that we've been waiting for all year arrived on the day of town meeting, but that allows us to not feel bad about having to be inside on a day like this because we're getting some desperately needed rain. But more importantly, people have come out once again to make important decisions to guide the future of this community, and I want to express my appreciation to everyone who came out today to be able to participate in that decision-making. By way of a brief introduction about what's happening on Beacon Hill, or a brief update, we are now in informal session. Informal sessions began exclusively at the end of July, so the legislature now meets twice a week as the Constitution requires us to do. But in informal session, we take up non-controversial matters, and there is no debate to speak of and no recorded roll-call votes. And so this is a time when we still meet as we are required to do, and we transact routine business. Now, it's important to understand that there are some matters of very important unfinished business that were not completed at the end of formal sessions at the end of July, and we are hoping to find a way forward on those. The most significant is an economic development bill that not only contains millions of dollars in investment for public infrastructure and other kinds of things, but also a very significant tax relief package on which the House and the Senate have principally agreed, but there are details that remain to be worked out. That economic development bill that contains the tax relief package is still in a conference committee, which are three members of the Senate and three members of the House, who are charged with reconciling the different versions of the bill between the House and the Senate, and we're hoping that we will be able to still find a way forward for all of the important reasons that are reflected in that bill before the end of this legislative session, which concludes roughly in the first week in January. That being said, one of the most notable things that we've been experiencing on Beacon Hill is continued robust tax returns. We are able to now tell you that we have a stabilization fund that is nearly $7 billion, and bear in mind that before the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, the stabilization fund had $3.5 billion. It has doubled at a time when we thought we would have depleted it just to keep the operations of state government moving. That has not been the case. As of right now, we still have significant amounts of money to be spent before the prior year's fiscal year can be closed out in terms of the books, so we have a close-out supplemental budget. And even with the passage of that close-out supplemental budget, and even with the tax rebates that will be coming in November, and by the way, I would say anecdotally that, or as a side note, they cannot come before November because October 21st is roughly the last day that someone could file an amended tax return. So we won't know the total amount to go out until after that, and they'll be going out in November. But even after all of that, we still have at least $1.5 billion in surplus from the prior fiscal year that we will need to allocate. Nice problem to have. And just one final update on fiscal matters. We do have, we do have an excess currently for fiscal year 2023. The last month that we have good numbers for is August, and as of August year-to-date, we were exceeding what we collected last year to date by some $250-plus million. So we continue to see robust finances, and we know that you would be happy to help us spend that, and we will work to make sure that we get as much money back for things like unrestricted general government aid, so-called local aid, and Chapter 70 for our schools. And that being said, we do appreciate the partnerships that we have with the Finance Committee, with the Select Board, with the School Committee, and with the Superintendent who's always available to us. And before I conclude my remarks, I would just answer a question that I know is on the minds of many, which is the pending legislation to move from a three-member Select Board to a five-member Select Board. And we have had some communication going back and forth between Senate Council. The bill is currently in the Senate Committee on Bills in the Third Reading, and there have been some unanswered questions that we've been trying to address about procedure, about what happens when the bill passes and when the ballot question is adopted, and then when the election would happen. All of that being said, we want to make sure that we honor the will of this town meeting, and in the minutes of town meeting, there were some things that left us with questions. I am pleased to report to you that both Representative Belcedo and I have had conversations with Town Council today, and we are closing that communications gap, and we expect that the remaining questions will be answered as of Monday so that we can move the bill along in the Senate and then send it over to the House where we would expect expeditious approval. So I do want to thank everyone for coming out today. I appreciate, Mr. Moderator, the opportunity to provide a brief update, and as always, want to thank everyone for the civic spirit of engagement that's represented at today's town meeting and always at town meeting in this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. The moderator now recognizes Representative Belcedo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you to my colleague in the Senate, as we are always working together, and I'm so deeply honored to represent Wenham in the State House on the House side, and have definitely tried to bring a voice to this community in making sure that we are adequately funded and supported in all the ways that we should be. And wanted to just run through a couple of figures. You know, we've, we in the legislature have definitely pushed on getting full funding for our schools and services and regional transportation. We did see increases in that capacity, and can't say enough about the school board and working with them. Also wanted to acknowledge the Select Board and the Town Manager, as well as FinCom and everyone who makes the world go round here. It really is an act of passion and commitment to the community, and I'm very thankful to work with these partners. Couple of highlights, Wenham specific. We were able to get $100,000 for new GIS system. I'll be very honest with you, I'm very intrigued as to what that's going to do, but we did get you the money, so please ask questions after. And we were also able to, and some of these are in partnership clearly with the Senator and my predecessor, Brad Hill, $100,000 for the Town of Wenham for the design, construction, and installation of bioretention system. Actually, Steve, this is something you and I spoke about, and it is hung up in the bill that the Senator spoke on, and that's the economic development bill of which I am very confident will have some conclusion to. And again, if you're intrigued by what a bioretention system is, I would encourage you to speak to Steve Pullos, but I'm all for it. I was like, why don't we have these all over the place? They're actually phenomenal, and there were a lot of colleagues curious about what it was, so you've started a whole thing, Steve Pullos. Also wanted to say, $20,000 for the planning, design, and construction of improvements in the West Wenham Park, and I believe that that was initiated out of my colleague in the Senate's office. So again, just wanted to say that all politics is local. This is the beacon of democracy right here in town meeting, and please know I'm always here to work with our community members, and sometimes we take your ideas and make them into phenomenal laws that work for the people. So it's all about the people and representation. I thank you for the opportunity, and I thank you, Mr. Moderator, for the time.
Thank you, Representative. I would also like to take a minute to just acknowledge Representative Sally Kearns, who is in attendance. She, even though she doesn't yet represent Wenham, I anticipate we will be hearing from her possibly in the spring. Before we turn to the business at hand, I also wanted to take a moment to announce that the Wenham Master Plan Advisory Committee is holding an open house on the master plan this coming Thursday night, October 6th. The open house will be held at the Wenham Museum and will get underway at 6:00 PM. I understand that the museum will be open and all exhibits will be on display. For more information, please see the flyer that was among the handouts for today's meeting. Now, it's time to turn to the business of the meeting. Our bylaws require that we have a quorum of 120 registered voters. I have been advised by the interim clerk that the quorum has been met, so I now call this special town meeting to order. We will omit the return of the warrant, which shows that it was properly served. As you may be aware, and as the empty seat up here on the stage indicates, the position of Town Clerk is currently vacant. Although the Select Board has appointed Ms. Brown, who is not a Wenham resident, as an interim clerk for all other purposes, under Section 14 of Chapter 41 of the General Laws, if the office of Town Clerk is vacant at the time of a town meeting, the meeting shall elect a resident as temporary clerk. So before we proceed to the warrant, we will conduct that election. The role of Town Clerk during a town meeting is twofold. During the meeting itself, the Town Clerk records the official minutes of the meeting, including all motions, summaries of deliberations, and votes as declared by the moderator. If a counted vote becomes necessary, the clerk also coordinates with the tellers for the counting of votes and reports the results to the moderator. The clerk for this meeting must be elected by the meeting itself. Before we move forward, I want to let you know that James Gowdy has offered to serve as clerk for this meeting and has prepared accordingly. At this time, I'll ask if there are any nominations in addition to Mr. Gowdy. Hearing none, I will declare nominations closed with James Gowdy as the sole candidate. As this is an election, the person with the most votes is declared elected regardless of the number of votes cast. For that reason, I ask that the Chair of the Finance Committee cast one written vote in favor of James Gowdy and provide the same to the Select Board. Once that procedural step has occurred, I will swear into office the clerk for today's meeting. The temporary clerk will have no additional duties other than to create and certify as accurate the minutes of today's meeting. Mr. Purdy, would you please cast your vote for temporary clerk and deliver it to the Select Board? Thank you, Mr. Purdy. Mr. Cheeseman, as Chair of the Select Board, could I ask you to declare the results of the election?
I have the one vote in favor of James Goudy and declare him the winner.
Thank you, Mr. Cheeseman. Congratulations, James, on your election as today's temporary clerk. Please join us up here on the stage. Hi, James. Pursuant to Section 107 of Chapter 41 of the General Laws, I will now administer your oath of office. Do you, James Gowdy, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially perform your duties as temporary clerk for the October 1, 2022 Special Town Meeting for the Town of Wenham to the best of your knowledge and ability, according to the bylaws of the town, the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the Constitution of the United States?
I do.
All right, thank you, James. We will now proceed with the business as set forth in the warrant. The conduct of our meeting today is governed by the rules of Town Meeting Time, a special set of parliamentary procedures developed by the Massachusetts Moderators Association for New England Town Meetings. My responsibilities as your moderator include presiding over and regulating the proceedings, deciding questions of order, declaring votes, and granting leave to address the meeting. To ensure that we have an orderly meeting and that people who want to speak are able to do so, permission of the moderator is required to address the meeting. If you wish to speak on a motion, please come to one of the microphones and wait to be recognized. When you ask to be recognized, please state your name and street address for the record. There will be a three-minute speaking maximum per resident per article during debate today. After three minutes have passed, I will hold up my hand to let you know that your time is up. Please wrap up your remarks when you see me do that. If you continue speaking other than to wrap up your remarks, I will let you know that your time is up and move on to the next speaker. Now, three minutes is not selected at random. To quote a long-serving moderator from the Town of Andover, "Three minutes is enough for anyone. After five, you put them to sleep. After seven, they're going to vote against you, even if they agree with you." So that gives you some sense of why we cap each resident's remarks at three minutes. Please remember that we are in a legislative session today for the Town of Wenham. We are here today with our friends and our neighbors, and while spirited debate is always welcome, please remain cordial and respectful, no matter the issue at hand. Civility is not optional at town meeting. You may disagree with other speakers, but please do so without being disagreeable. Do not make remarks of a personal nature, whether directed at an elected official, an appointed member of the town government, town or school, district staff, or any of your fellow citizens. Any comments or questions should be directed to the moderator rather than the boards, committee members, other residents, or prior speakers. Town meeting is not a forum for cross-examination of presenters or other speakers. If necessary, should a question arise, and if I deem it appropriate, I may then ask the person making the motion or another member of the town government, if appropriate, to address that question as best as can be done. Whether you decide to speak on a motion or not, please refrain from applauding, cheering, or for that matter booing a speaker's remarks. Disorderly conduct is grounds for removal from the meeting after a warning, but I trust that won't be necessary today. While we have a number of non-residents in attendance, we generally only allow residents to speak on the articles in the warrant. However, I will assume that the meeting is comfortable allowing the Town Administrator, Department Heads, Superintendent of Schools, and Town Council to speak when they have relevant information and after being recognized by the moderator. Hearing no objections, I declare that it is so by unanimous consent. If any other non-resident wishes to speak on a particular matter, they may do so through the request of the moderator. As I previously noted, however, it is not our tradition to allow such speakers. If I nevertheless deem the request appropriate, informative, and consistent with our practice, I will then ask town meeting to vote on any such request. At this meeting, as previously noted, the Town Clerk's role is to keep the official record of all motions made and all votes taken. Only registered voters may vote. Each voter, registered, each registered voter received a voting card at check-in. If you are a registered voter but did not check in and obtain a voting card, please see the election officers at the check-in table in the vestibule at the back of the gym. If you don't have a voting card, you will not be able to vote. When putting a motion to vote, I will first ask for those in favor of the motion to raise their cards. Then after those have been noted and lowered, I will ask for all those opposed to raise their cards. At that point, I will, if possible, declare the vote. Our town bylaws allow me to declare a vote even where a two-thirds vote is required in addition to simple majority votes. If I am not able to declare the vote based on my observation of the room, then we will move to a counted vote. If this occurs, we have several election officers, who we refer to teller, as tellers during town meeting, standing by. During a counted vote, we ask that everyone remain seated in order to ensure accurate counting. As a reminder, if you're not within the gym, your vote will not be counted. Finally, please note that a motion to move the question, which motion is intended to stop debate and move to vote, is only in order when made by a person who I've recognized to speak from the speaker's line. A motion to move the question may not be preceded by any argument or question concerning the article or pending motion, and any effort to move the question after debate will be ruled out of order. Moreover, although a motion to move the question requires a second, it is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds vote. If it passes, it means that we move straight to vote on the pending motion. If a motion to move the question is defeated, we carry on with debate of the pending motion. With those last few preliminary matters taken care of, let's turn to the warrant and begin. The warrant before us presents four articles. Rather than reading the text of each article, which already appears in your warrant book and which will appear up on screen, I will now provide a brief overview of each article. Unless I hear an objection, therefore, we will have, we will waive the reading of the articles by unanimous consent and move on. Hearing no objections, the articles are as follows. Article 1 concerns the reauthorization of borrowing authorized during the 2020 town meeting for the Cutler School feasibility study. Article 2 seeks approval of borrowing authorized by the Regional School District Committee for additional funds needed for the feasibility study and makes the town's approval subject to a debt exclusion, allowing the town to exempt its share of the debt service from the levy limit. Article 3 proposes the creation of a stabilization fund for the school district, and Article 4 proposes an amendment to the general bylaws to clarify that the term limits only apply to at-large members of the Community Preservation Committee. A few ground rules before we proceed with these articles. Each article advises the meeting of the topic to be addressed. Please note the inclusion in the warrant book of recommendations and commentary on each article. The purpose of the commentaries is to give you some idea of what each article does and why it is on the warrant today. Please also note the handouts that were on your chair that make some updates to the information in the warrant book. One further note: In the warrant book, three of these articles as listing, are listed as requiring a two-thirds vote. That's not correct. Each of the articles presented today only will require a simple majority. Now, articles themselves are not motions. As Town Meeting Time helpfully explains, an article is not self-starting. It merely stakes out the limits of the area within which the meeting may act. Nothing affirmative may happen, and the moderator may not take a vote unless someone makes a motion. So for each article, I will see if the board, committee, or individual advancing the article in question wishes to make a motion. If a motion is made and receives a second, we will then take up any questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the motion, and ultimately vote on the motion. If no such motion is made or the motion is not seconded, we'll move on to the next article. To ensure that the record is clear on what town meeting is voting upon and to ensure that the temporary clerk can prepare complete minutes of today's meeting, I ask that any substantive amendments to a motion be made in writing. If necessary, we have a form available should any voter wish to make such a motion that they have not prepared in advance. Our town bylaws provide two governing rules concerning motions on the floor of town meeting. First, our town meeting does not generally permit motions for reconsideration unless the moderator determines that a compelling reason exists, such as a change of circumstances or the acquisition of new information. Given these narrow guardrails, a motion for reconsideration is rarely in order at Wenham's town meeting. Second, our town meeting does not permit motions to take warrant articles out of order unless I, as moderator, determine that a change of circumstances, error, or discovery of new information has occurred since the preparation and posting of the warrant, bearing directly upon the purpose or effect of the article in question. Motions to change the order of warrant articles are never in order solely to affect the timing of voting on an article. So absent compelling circumstances, we'll be acting on the articles in the order they appear in the warrant book. With that, let's turn to the articles. As I noted, Articles 1 and 2 both relate to the funding of the Elementary School feasibility study. Before we have the motion on Article 1, I will recognize Superintendent Tracy to make a brief presentation on these two articles. I understand that you all may have questions or comments on one or both of these articles. There will be time for that once the motions have been made and debate has opened on each article. Please proceed, Superintendent Tracy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Cutler Elementary School is a 45,800-square-foot masonry building, construction 1951, with modular classroom additions in '52 and '56. In 1992, the Whittier Wing was added, which houses kindergarten classrooms and a gymnasium. The school serves 254 students currently in grades K to 5. Now, in 2022, this building has deteriorated beyond appropriate educational use. Some of the deficiencies include not being fully ADA compliant for accessibility and safe evacuation from the facility, restrooms that do not have required clearances or accessibility, classroom ventilators that are at the end of life. Currently, it's difficult to get parts for many of the pieces of equipment we have. Electrical service is underrated for the building. There's no backup power system. The modular section of the building where music and art classes are located is starting to fail structurally. Repairs have had to be made because of rusted and rotted floor supports. The building lacks a building-wide fire suppression system and a modern addressable fire alarm system. During the last three years, we have submitted a statement of interest to the Mass School Building Authority to request assistance with this project. As part of the process, in October 21, we walked through all three elementary schools with representatives of the school department, the towns, and the MSBA to determine overall conditions. conditions. In March of '22, we received the invitation to start the process with the additional green light to add Winthrop School to the project for many of the same reasons listed in Cutler School. It is important to note that this project will benefit all elementary school students in the district as they move through our school system. Next slide, please. This chart outlines the eight modules of the school building process. Currently, we're in the first module called eligibility. This module essentially amounts to a vetting process to measure our community, if our communities are ready and willing to support a project of this magnitude. This module has a duration of 270 days that began for us back on May 2, and requires the school department and towns to produce various information, including enrollment figures, housing starts, birth rates, maintenance costs, et cetera. The reason we are here today is also related to the eligibility period. We are asked by the Massachusetts School Building Authority to work with our towns to secure the first level of local funding that will allow us to begin the next module. Next slide, please. This slide is a representation of more granular stages of Modular One. To date, we have met all stages and are currently in the second-to-last segment, local authorization of funding. Next slide, please. Article one is the first of two related to the Cutler School project. As mentioned earlier, we have been applying for years for this project to be accepted by the MSBA. In fiscal year '20, the towns authorized $250,000 to be used for feasibility study in anticipation of possible acceptance into the building process. We were not accepted into the process and have been holding the funds since that time. Also, in fiscal year '20, we did not use the correct warrant article required by the MSBA to immediately use the money for the project. Today, with the appropriate article language pre-approved by the MSBA, we bring back the request to reauthorize the funds for the original intent, the feasibility and schematic design phases of the Cutler-Winthrop School project. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Tracy. So now we'll take up Article one. Article one presents a clarification of use of previous borrowing for the feasibility study. As noted in the warrant, this article proposes a bit of housekeeping in connection with the money that the town already voted to borrow during the annual town meeting in 2020 for the feasibility study, as required by the MSBA. If Diane Buco of the Select Board wishes to make the formal motion under Article one, I will entertain the motion.
I move that the town vote to authorize the use of $250,000 borrowing approved under Article seven of the July 11, 2020 annual town meeting to be used by the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School District for a school district's facility study, to now be used for the specific purpose of paying the cost of a feasibility study for the Cutler Elementary School at 237 Asbury Street, South Hamilton, Mass. 01982, for which the study, for which the study, the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, said amount to be expended at the direction of the district's Cutler School Building Committee. The MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any study costs the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities. Any grant that the district may receive from the MSBA for the study shall be as set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA.
Thank you, Diane. Is there a second? All right, would anyone like to speak on the motion? Seeing no one approach the microphones, we will now move to vote on the motion under Article one. Again, contrary to what is listed in the warrant book, a vote on this motion requires a simple majority. So, all those in favor, raise your cards. Thank you. Lower them. All those opposed? Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to Article two. So, Article two also relates to the Cutler School feasibility study. It is the first of three steps in the process of funding the remainder of the study cost. This step is simply the town's decision to approve the school district's borrowing for the feasibility study and to move on step, to step two. Because the main motion under this article is to approve the borrowing by the school district rather than the town itself, only a majority vote is needed. As drafted, the town meeting vote is contingent upon a Proposition Two and a Half debt exclusion ballot question, which is step two of the process. So that is why the title of the article refers to a debt exclusion. But the action to be taken under today's article is not actually the undertaking of a debt obligation, be it within the levy limit or outside of the levy limit. The debt exclusion would give the town the option to raise the monies needed for its allocable share of the study costs outside of the levy limit. That question will appear on the November 2022 general election ballot. The debt exclusion presented on the ballot in November simply allows, but does not require, the town to pay its portion of the school assessment as debt service outside of the levy limit. As discussed in the commentary in the warrant book, the town's portion of the $1 million that the district has authorized borrowing is approximately $346,000 prior to state reimbursement. Ultimately, in a third step, the town will decide at future town meetings how to pay the assessment as part of the annual budgeting process. As noted in the warrant book, the FINCOM's recommendation on this article is to be given here today on the floor of town meeting. So as such, I'll now ask Chair Jim Purdy to report the committee's recommendation.
The Finance and Advisory Committee has voted 4-0-0 to recommend favorable action on Article two. Just a brief comment. A successful local vote authorization, so-called today, and approval given to the Hamilton-Wyndham Regional School District to expend the proposed $1 million, $346,000 for Wyndham. What we're doing is essentially certifying the necessary local support and interest as required by the Mass School Building Authority to enter into the next stage of this project, the so-called feasibility and initial design phase. And the FINCOM supports that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. If Diane Buco, the Select Board, wishes to make the formal motion under Article two, I will entertain the motion.
I move that the town approve the $1 million borrowing authorized by the Hamilton-Wyndham Regional School District for a feasibility study for the Cutler Elementary School located at 237 Asbury Street, South Hamilton, Mass. 01982, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, said amount to be expended at the direction of the district's Cutler School Building Committee. The MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any study costs the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities. Any grant that the district may receive from the MSBA for the study shall be as set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA. Provided further, that any grant the district may receive from the MSBA for the study shall be as set forth, and it looks like a repeat, in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA. Provided further, however, that the vote taken here under shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town at an election to exempt from the limitations on taxes imposed by General Law 59, Section 21(c), so-called Proposition Two and a Half, the town's allocable share of the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing, and further, that the amount of the borrowing authorized by the district shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA.
Thank you, Diane. Is there a second? Motion has been seconded. Would anyone like to speak on the motion?
Michelle Bailey, T. Remington Road. I did ask some questions at the warrant hearing, but other than maybe a handful of people in this room were also there. So I want to be clear that what we're voting on here is both to allow the school district to borrow money and to put this on a ballot vote. Is that correct?
So, as I said, what the motion proposes to do is to authorize the school district's borrowing and make that authorization subject to a ballot vote on a debt exclusion. Yes.
Okay, so if the ballot vote fails, this motion will fail, even if it is approved here?
As, yes, as drafted. And that should be reflected in the flow chart that was among the handouts.
Yep. So I would move to amend this motion and just have it stop where it says, provided further, however, that the vote taken thereon shall be contingent upon the affirmative vote. That way, we can show our support for this project, and then in the spring, decide if that should go to an two-and-a-half prop debt exclusion, or if that should be paid for out of current funds.
Okay, Ms. Bailey, why don't you come forward and either submit or write out your motion? All right, just give us a minute while we get the motion to amend into the screen so that everyone can see it on the screens, and then we will continue discussion on the motion to amend. Okay, so, Michelle, the motion that, my understanding is that the intention of the motion is to remove the last paragraph, which is the contingency. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's a clause, but yes.
Okay. Would you mind just coming up so we can click, write that on your form so that we can clarify that? Okay, thank you for standing by. So we have a motion to amend on the floor. The proposed amendment is as highlighted. It would strike through the contingency language. Now, town council has advised me that even if this motion to amend were to pass and the main motion were to proceed without the contingency, the ballot question will still remain in November and be voted on. So, any other discussion on the motion to amend that Ms. Bailey has offered up?
Patrick Waddell, 5 Grape Pond Road. Would the ballot vote still be a supermajority or a simple?
As town council has just advised me, the ballot vote was and always would be a simple majority.
Thank you.
Speak. Can I speak?
No, Ms. Bailey, you, you were, you offered the amendment and you've made your, you made your case on it.
When did I make my case on it?
When you offered the amendment. But sure, no one else is really lining up, so go ahead.
I'm sorry, but I stopped after I made the amendment because I thought I
Go ahead.
I tried to get to speak on the amendment.
Go ahead.
So I made the amendment. I apologize for the delay, but after attending the warrant hearing, it was clear that this was the only way to adjust this. It is very important for this project to go forward, and making it contingent on a ballot vote puts it at risk of passing. So if the will of this body is for the school district to do this feasibility study, we should do it. It was also clear at the warrant hearing that the decision on how to pay for this would be made in April. So to do the ballot vote now does have us no meaning. We still would have had to have a ballot vote override at the town meeting in April, so it is completely unnecessary. Also, at this time, the town has $1.4 million in ARPA funds, which could be spent on this expense, which we would be able to make that decision on in April, should the Board of Selectmen hold aside that amount of money, and I would encourage them to do so.
Would anyone else like to speak on the proposed amendment that Ms. Bailey has Seeing no one at the microphones, we will move to a vote on the motion to amend. All those in favor of the motion to amend, raise your hands, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed to the motion to amend. The motion amend passes by majority. So we will now move back to the main motion as amended, which, Michelle, why don't you just remove the highlighting? You can leave the strike through because that's now out. Actually, yeah. All right, the main motion as amended now appears on the screen. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Seeing no one at the microphones, we will now move to the vote on Article two. Again, contrary to what is listed in the warrant book, a vote on this motion only requires a simple majority. And even though the contingency has been removed, the town will still be voting in November on the proposed debt exclusion. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes by majority. The motion passes by majority. We will now move on to Article Three. This article proposes that the town authorize the regional school district to create a statutory stabilization fund. I will once again recognize Superintendent Tracy to make a brief presentation on this article. I also understand that Superintendent Tracy wishes to, may wish to have members of the Athletic Facilities Improvement Committee speak as part of his informational presentation. Although some members of that committee are Hamilton residents, I will assume that the meeting is comfortable allowing members of the committee to speak as part of the informational presentation, even though the ordinary rules regarding participation in town meeting will apply when we move to debate. Hearing no objection, I declare it as so by unanimous consent. Please proceed, Superintendent Tracy.
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, everyone. Article Three is a request for the school department to establish a stabilization fund. I want to be clear that my intention is to use the excess and deficiency or budgeted funds as allowable by law to fund the stabilization fund for the athletic facilities improvement project. This article is only to allow the school department to establish the fund. Any monies that move into this fund would need to be authorized at a town meeting. Any expenditures from the fund can be made by the school committee with a two-thirds vote of all community members. There is also a required annual report of the use of the funds to be submitted annually to both towns. State law allows for 5% of the previous school year's assessment to the towns to be in the fund annually. In the current case, it would be about $1.6 million. Since the funds we would request to move into the stabilization fund were previously raised by the towns, there would be no future tax impacts to the taxpayer, essentially relieving the taxpayers the burden of the increased taxes while allowing for substantial monies to be used for a large-scale capital project, in our case, the athletic fields improvement project. This is the most current rendition of the athletic facilities improvement project that will be located behind the middle school, high school complex. It includes a synthetic turf main field that supports field hockey, soccer, lacrosse, football, baseball, youth sports, a track, and lights. It also shows a synthetic turf baseball field and softball field and an addition of tennis courts. Next slide, please. The goals of this project are to really bring students and events back to our campus. We've had a number of opportunities where kids may have been able to play home games but, on our field, but because they are unplayable, we have to rent a field or send them to another district to participate in their own home game. It would also enhance youth and community athletic experience. It would relieve pressure on the towns and the park fields. It would also address a recent draft report that I received from the NIOSC, which is critical to the school, the high school facility and grounds for accreditation. I believe it would build community pride and it would help to retain and attract families to our district. Pretty clear, the cost estimate for this project currently is between $12 and $13 million. None of this cost project is reimbursed by the state. Because of that, there are a number of avenues being pursued. Next slide, please. There is a community volunteer group that is fundraising privately to help offset costs. We are planning to begin to actively pursue state and local grant applications. And then we will continue to refine the design, continue to improve the permitting and the budget process. Next slide. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. During the last year on the job, I've learned a lot about the lack of trust that's developed through the years between the towns and the school department. I understand some of the reasons I've worked and have worked during the last year to begin to rebuild that trust by remaining open and transparent through last year's budgeting process. We have remained open to and available for meetings with any members of town committees, boards, including the town administrator and his staff. Now, we're at a crossroads. We sit on the precipice of some wonderful improvements for our school system that ultimately upgrade and update our communities as well. The success of these projects will require all of us to come together to decide if we are or are not ready and willing to fund these projects on behalf of our children. Top-quality schools are investments for the future. We cannot continue to ignore the growing deficiencies of our school buildings and facilities. The school department now hopes to embark on plans to improve our schools and grounds, increase competitiveness, bring students back to our schools, and to continue to offer a high-quality education to all of our students. We need the tools to do this. I believe our schools and our communities have an opportunity to do something amazing for our children while improving the value of the properties within. People constantly tell me they moved here because of the schools. How many of you moved here because of the schools? We are staring straight into two opportunities to bring back that luster and in turn reconnect our towns in ways to continue to support a truly great place to live and to educate our children. Let's take it on together and be proud of the future we create that will ultimately benefit us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Tracy. I also understand that although the FINCOM made no recommendation on this article, the chair of that committee wishes to make a statement on behalf of the committee. Mr. Purdy, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First, let me say that the Finance Committee has come to a recommendation on this article. This morning, we met. It was a two-two split vote in favor and not in favor of the article. So let me just make a brief comment. And I would welcome comments from the committee after my commentary. While the Finance and Advisory Committee took no action on Article Three, as it contained no direct financial expenditure request, the following additional commentary is offered at this time. The Finance Committee looks forward to and anticipates discussions both during the school budget process and at future annual town meetings regarding the district's provision of timely and clarifying information as to the following. The source of proposed funds to fund the stabilization account. Direct information as to the potential impact on the school's operation budget. And finally, information as to the potential impact on subsequent appropriations to each community's share of the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District expenses. There has been discussion about a memorandum of understanding between the communities and the school department. That MOU has not been developed. I am hopeful that with that development and with the parameters and that I've outlined here, that the school budget will go forward in a way that delineates this allocation into this new stabilization fund if it's approved is clear and it outlines the issues before both of the communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Superintendent Tracy, is there anything else you wish to add at this time? Thank you. Now, if Gary Cheeseman of the Select Board wishes to make the formal motion under Article Three, I will entertain the motion.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District to establish a stabilization fund for the district pursuant to Section 16G, one half of the Chapter 71 of Massachusetts General Laws.
Is there a second? Would anyone like to speak on the motion?
Hi, Tim Fazio, 1 Miles River Lane, Wenham. Thank you, everybody. I am here as a representative of the Hamilton-Wenham Athletic Fields Improvement Committee. Just wanted to give some update and information about, and to echo what Superintendent Tracy has said. We have been working in partnership with the district and with many others on town boards throughout probably the last 16 months to come up with fundraising activities, fundraising committees, ways in which that we can help get this project through. We very much support everything that we can do to start the process, and that starts right now with Article Three and having our ducks in a row as we go forward with the project. So I encourage everybody to support Superintendent Tracy and his plans. Thank you.
Thank you. In the back of the room, yes.
Thanks. Peter Sibley, 188 Main Street. Is it possible, if this gets approved today, that when it goes to town vote, that we can have the vote attached to a promise for where it goes? Do you follow me? Because I think there's some general concern that the intention, as we hear it today, is outstanding, and I really hope we can get this done, but it's not exactly locked in, if I understand correctly, which means that the funds, in theory, could then go somewhere completely different once approved.
So I think the town council has, where is, the town council and perhaps Superintendent Tracy both have some information to add on this.
Mr. Moderator, Lauren Goldberg, three U. The simple answer is that the town and the district have the ability to decide how they intend to use those funds. Whether that would be a legally enforceable requirement is something that's different than what we're talking about. But yes, can there be a consensus, a collaboration built on how those monies would be identified to be included in the stabilization fund and to be expended from it is something that could be worked on in the future.
But it's only consensus. It's not a mandate or contingency.
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, please proceed, town council.
Thank you. The, this law is relatively new. The way that the statute is written, there is an argument that can be made that it would be able to be expended by the school committee, the regional school district committee, on a two-thirds vote. The part of the statute about how the money gets into the stabilization account is a little bit less clear. It says the school committee may include a line in their budget that they propose to town meeting, and everybody knows we come to town meeting and we vote on a bottom-line budget. So although there is nothing mandated in the statute about being able to kind of direct the funds, certainly the district's school committee could choose to enter into an agreement with the towns that said how that was going to be dealt with. At the very least, the school committee has to meet in public session in order to make any decisions about how to use its funds, so there is also that.
Superintendent Tracy, do you have anything else to add? Okay, thank you, Superintendent.
Mr. Moderator, perhaps the superintendent's comments could be included for the record. Thank you.
For the record, Superintendent Tracy noted his agreement with Ms. Goldberg's comments on the matter. Yes, go ahead, please.
Andrea Van Bovin, 20 Middlewood Road, Drive. First of all, thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to speak, and we absolutely have to have these fields. I am 100% in. 20 years ago, my son, Alex Madden, was captain of the lacrosse and football fields, and we could have done something back then, and we put it off, and now we're in serious trouble. My concerns relate to where these funds are actually going to go, and it relates to Mr. Sibley's comments. In the past, there were funds voted to pay down debt to the OPEB, but that was diverted instead to playground, a playground here, which is arguably necessary. I'll leave it at that. Sorry. So then, I'm not quite clear on exactly when this gets funded. So the funds that are out there, does that just automatically go into the stabilization fund? Mr. Tracy, looks like he wants to answer that.
If you have, if you have other questions, why don't you put them all out there and then I'll ask Superintendent Tracy.
And so I'm, to the question about the memorandum, I'm curious as to when that would be done, because I would love to have that done. I think that would be part of the clarification process that Michelle mentioned, so that we can make sure that that's out there till we all know exactly what we're voting on. Are we voting for the fields or are we giving the school committee, you know, a five-member vote to put it anywhere they want? And that's my concern.
Okay, thank, thank you. So I'll address your second question. The vote today is simply to authorize the school district to create the stabilization fund. It does not, it's not contingent on any particular use of funds, and the manner in which the school committee ultimately takes funds out of that stabilization fund, if created and funded, would be by a two-thirds vote of the school committee. Superintendent Tracy, if you want to address the other aspects of the comments that were offered?
Ms. Van Bovin, thank you for your question. I think it's an important one. The bigger thing goes right back to what I said a little while ago. It's all about that trust factor. You know, all of us, all of us sitting here are entrusted with fairly large sums of money to manage on behalf of our towns and our schools. Same with the school department. Opening the fund today is basically opening the fund. There is no money going into it. There's nothing been authorized to go into that fund. As a matter of process, and I would say we'll take it to, I mean, push you out till town meeting when we present the budget at town meeting, we have a couple of options. We have excess and deficiency funds that could be used, as we did last year, for the OPEB funding. Excess and deficiency funds could be used to fund that account. We can also put into the budget a very specific line item that says stabilization fund, and that is another mechanism to fund the account. I think it's important to note that the school committee, actually, school district, me, has to submit a report to both towns annually on how the money's spent. And really, that's your checks and balances. When you get that report and you look at it and say, well, they spent it on this and this and this and nothing for fields, the following opportunity to vote at town meeting to move funds in there would probably make you say no. So I think there are a couple of mechanisms in place to help us to, quote, "manage those funds." And again, my personal connection in this district, I really love the work that I do, and part of that is working to build back that trust. It's important for us to work together to get these projects in play, and I don't want to fiddle around with that either and, you know, start to change the direction, if you will. I think it's important to stay focused and be honest with everybody, so thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Tracy.
I apologize, is there any way I can make one statement and?
Yeah, you have about another minute, so please, go ahead.
So the statement is, is that the FINCOM and Hamilton today unanimously declined to support this, but they voted it in anyway. And can we get out of this? Once we establish it, is there any way to separate it? Because I'm concerned about inexorably tying our two towns together, and with the financial situation and the Hamilton tax rate going up consistently could create a huge problem overall.
Thank you, Ms. Van Bovin. Town council, do you have anything to offer on the possibility of dissolving a stabilization fund down the road?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. There's really nothing in the statute that talks about how to end a stabilization fund for a regional school district. It would appear that the mechanism would be not to fund it, but again, there's some question about the manner in which the monies can be placed into the stabilization fund. So at this point, it's really not, it's not 100% clear.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on the motion? Yes, in the back.
Hi, my name is Deb Evans, 12 Porter Street. Two points. One is, as a former school committee member, I can tell you that any decisions that get made, that group of nine plus your leadership team meets more than you'd even want to know. They're all open meetings. Budgets are formed, not in a vacuum. So if you have input on budget items such as how the stabilization fund should or shouldn't be funded, don't wait until the budget goes to town meeting. You've got to participate. There's no easy, time-efficient way to do it, but all of the meetings are posted, they all have agenda items, and honestly, having sat on the committee, I can tell you, there have been really kind of lightning rod issues where honestly- have been really kind of lightning rod issues where honestly, we're talking to the camera. There are no other humans there, and the only way to get your input is to show up and pay attention. And we all, every taxpayer, every town member, has that right. Those are open meetings. So just as a point of reference. I do have a question for the town, and I know the answer, but I think other people need to know the answer. Can you please tell me if Wyngham has a stabilization fund in the town?
So I'll ask Jamie to answer that question. Go ahead, Jamie.
Yes, we do.
Okay. And how is that monitored and regulated and kind of disclosed to taxpayers of how that's used?
So any appropriation out of the town stabilization fund is brought before town meeting and has to pass by a two-thirds vote of the town meeting.
Okay. So it sounds like with the school district, because we've got a different entity, we have regional schools, are trying to mirror what both, each of the towns does have a stabilization fund that is managed by the FinComs and town meeting, and I would suggest that the schools being able to authorize a stabilization fund in this context is consistent with the way we do business on the town side for each of the towns.
And one thing I'll just note for every, thank you, Ms. Evans. One thing I'll note is that a town stabilization fund is governed by a different statute than a regional school district stabilization fund, and that's why there are different processes for moving money in and out of those different types of funds. Would anyone else like to speak on the motion? I'm not seeing anyone at the microphone, so I'm confident we can now move to vote on the motion before town meeting. Again, this motion simply requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by majority. All right, on to Article IV, our last article of the day. This article concerns a proposed amendment to the general bylaws regarding term limits for the Community Preservation Committee. If Gary Cheeseman of the Select Board wishes to make the formal motion under Article IV, I will entertain the motion.
I move to approve Article IV as set forth in the warrant.
Thank you. Is there a second? Would anyone like to speak on the motion?
I would.
Hold on one second, Patrick.
Patrick Waddell, 5 Great Pond Road. I have a motion to amend, which I will submit.
So we have a motion to amend the main motion under Article IV, and I'll read it, and we'll get it up on the screen in a second. The motion is to amend the main motion as follows. To replace the proposed amended language of general bylaws, Section 5-34, Community Preservation Committee, subsection A2, with the following text. Members of multiple member bodies shall be designated by such body for up to a three-year term on the Community Preservation Committee. Such members shall be designated for a term longer than the term being served on the designated committee. At-large members appointed by the Select Board shall be appointed for three-year terms. All committee members not elected to a represented board shall be ineligible for reappointment after serving six consecutive years. No term shall extend beyond six consecutive years. The six-year term limit will reset after a citizen has been off the Community Preservation Committee for one full year. Is there a second on the motion to amend?
Second.
So give us one second. Okay, thank you for standing by. So again, the motion to amend has now been put up on the screen, and what this motion to amend, and Mr. Waddell, I'll give you your three minutes and a second, does is it would replace all of the text that is proposed in the warrant book, including everything that's being proposed in the warrant book as struck through or added, with this new language. So with that, go ahead, Mr. Waddell, three minutes.
Excellent, thank you. So when we first limited term limits on the CPC, it was because the committee was getting stale. And it was intended at that point that all members would have a six-year term limit. I served on this committee for eight years and served as chair for two. The initial bylaw was ignored by sending committees. So from REC, REC, Concom, Housing Authority, and the HDC kept sending members year and year, the same member, over and over again. That was not the intent of the bylaw. The bylaw was to refresh the committee after six years. This simplifies and says everyone is going to be subject to a six-year term limit on the CPC unless you are elected, and the only elected position on the CPC comes from the planning board. So WHA, excuse me, WHA as well. So WHA and the planning board. Everyone else would be six years, then you have to sit a year out and then come back. The CPC is a very important committee, and I think it is important to get as many voices heard as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. In the back, yes?
So I don't know if it's a point of order, but I have a question, which is if I would like to make a...
Just for the record...
Michelle Bailey, two...
Thank you, Michelle.
If I wanted to make a different amendment, as I had discussed at the warrant hearing, when is the right time to do that?
So you could do one of two things at this point in time. If your amendment relates to Mr. Waddell's motion to amend, you could amend his amendment, or you could wait until a vote is taken on Mr. Waddell's motion to amend, and then when we're back in the discussion on the main motion, you can offer another amendment at that time, if you wish.
Can I show it to you, and you decide if it's closely related?
No. Unfortunately, I can't do that.
So I would like to amend Mr. Waddell's motion to state instead that any member, after serving 10 consecutive years, shall be ineligible for reappointment until after the next succeeding annual town meeting. Any vacancy on the Community Preservation Committee shall be filled for the unexpired term of the resigning member. So now I'm not going to speak wide.
Is there a second on Ms. Bailey's motion to amend Mr. Waddell's motion?
Second.
By Mr. Waddell himself. Thank you, Patrick. All right. motion to amend, up on the screen for everyone to see. And Ms. Bailey, would you like to speak on your motion to amend?
Yep, I feel like the Community Preservation Committee receives their money from the taxpayers, and so there should be a broad interest from the town on that committee. But we have seen that the same people have served over and over and over again from the appointed and elected committees. So it would be great if those committees could start to build the bench and encourage new members. This would require them to start doing that. When I picked this, I went to the Affordable Housing Trust document, because that committee also gets their money from the taxpayers, and this is their wording, 10 consecutive years. Their terms are for two years, similar to the Community Preservation Committee. So it seems reasonable that we would align those two types of committees to have the same types of requirements. Mr. Waddell's amendment, while it tries to put the term limits on, it creates some ambiguity, and if you were made the member from the Concom for three years, but your term on the Concom ended, are you still their representative? So this just states that once you're on, you can be on for 10 consecutive years, and after that, you would need to sit out for one year. Both this and the Affordable Housing Trust are highly regulated, and it takes a long time to learn the rules and the ins and outs. So I would encourage us to make the term reasonably long, but not excessively long. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. At this point, Town Council has advised me that there's a question as to the legality of the amendment as it relates to the planning board, so I'd ask Town Council to share her insight on the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I really wanted to leave here without speaking again, so, too bad for me. I was just going to say that under Chapter 44B, Section 5, which is a section about the creation of the committee, it talks about the town doing that by bylaw. However, it also says that the membership shall consist of, you know, it says, one member of the Conservation Commission as designated by the commission, one member of the Historical Commission as designated by the Historical Commission, one member of the Planning Board as designated by the Planning Board. So I haven't seen in person a bylaw that has term limits on the board and committee representatives. I have seen a bylaw that has term limits on the at-large members, and so I can't say for sure how the AG might act on that. It's possible the AG would approve it, because the town has the right to decide its membership by bylaw, but there's also a potential that the AG could say, the statute specifically says the membership gets to be decided, I mean, the membership of those boards and committees decides who serves on the committee. So I just don't know ultimately what the Attorney General might say.
Thank you. All right. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Leo Maestronzi, Lauter Row. I agree with your statement, the final statement, but as to Michelle's amendment and Patrick's amendment, I was going to ask what would happen if each one of those committees elected the person even after 10 years, and it was unanimous, then the committee would be at a stalemate, and Patrick and Michelle wouldn't be happy. So it's like the final statement, I think it's up to each one of the committees themselves, the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, the Affordable Housing Committee, in the Historic Society, to elect the members, the member who they choose. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Harriet.
Harriet Davis, 162 Cherry Street. I was chairman of CPC for five years, and I worked with Paul Weaver on developing this bylaw. I also spoke with Stuart Saginaw, who was our guru, if you will, he's head of the CPA Coalition in Boston. He said he knows of no other community that has imposed term limits on these committees, and for the reasons that Lauren just identified, it goes against the statute. I would also point out that we've had difficulty getting people to serve from the committees or to fight for a position, and we've had several people stay on for some time because nobody wanted the job. You know, you're working for a committee, and suddenly you're told you've got to go to the CPC. It has caused, it was very difficult to get people together. We only meet about four or five times a year, so it's not that onerous, but I would say that putting limits on the at-large members makes a lot of sense, because there's a big pool of community people to draw from. But for the five boards that appoint people, let sleeping dogs lie, and just let them appoint, as the best general law has identified. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Would anyone else like to speak on the pending motion to amend? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Cheeseman.
Jerry Cheeseman, 75 Pleasant Street. I didn't expect what I thought was a clerical correction to the bylaw to take on such a large life. Basically, we researched back the minutes from the various committees and saw that there was inconsistency as to how they appointed from the five committees onto the CPC. Some were just verbal, you go do it, others took formal... Some were just verbal, you go do it, others took formal votes. We've seen some that just continue on. There are a lot of questions as to whether the committee could stop or change, and as you know, we reorganize every year. So, the original motion was simply to put in writing or correct the previous bylaw to what is going on today, is that the Select Board puts term limits on the at-large and the other five committees when they send forward, that essentially, they've been participating without any particular limits observed. So, I think the main point is to put the reality of how the committees have found it easy or best to work into the bylaw, which is the original amendment. So, I'd ask you to turn down the other table.
Thank you, Mr. Cheeseman. All right, seeing no one else at the microphones, we will now vote on Ms. Bailey's motion to amend Mr. Waddell's original motion to amend. All right, everyone got that? So, we are voting on whether to amend Mr. Waddell's motion, as Ms. Bailey has offered. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Okay, I'm going to try this one more time, because hopefully we won't have to- And this time, please stand up when you're raising your card, just so I can see a little bit clearer. All those in favor of the motion to amend Mr. Waddell's motion? Okay, thank you. All those opposed? The motion to amend passes by majority. All right, so Mr. Waddell's original motion to amend is now off the table. We now will come back to the main motion, which is-
You have Mr. Waddell's amendment, you have the amendment as amended.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Town Council. All right, we now have to vote on the motion to amend that Mr. Waddell has offered, as amended by Ms. Bailey, as you've just voted. So, we're now deciding whether this amendment will be made to the original main motion that is as reflected in the warrant book. So, all those in favor of the motion to amend, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion to amend passes by majority. Yep. All right, and now we have the main motion, so bear with us, we'll get back to the main All right, so we now have the amended main motion. Any other discussion or debate before we vote on the main motion under Article Four? All right, seeing no one, oh, go ahead.
Andrew Tang, 23, Burnham. Question, if this passes and then the AG says you can't do that, where are we, back to the original language?
Town Council?
Mr. Moderator, bylaw amendments are never effective until the AG has approved it and it's been posted and published as required by law. So, the current bylaw will continue to apply. If the Attorney General were to approve the main motion as amended, then that would essentially come into being after it's posted and published. So, right now, it's status quo, and it would be status quo until the AG approves the bylaw and it's posted and published. So, that's for real.
Thank you, Town Council. If, Diane-
Sorry, maybe I said that the wrong way. If the town meeting approves and the AG does not, you stick with what you got. So, you have what you have right now in the town bylaws. See, I told you, wanted no more speaking roles. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lauren. All right. Again, contrary to what's listed in the warrant book, this is a proposed amendment to a general bylaw, which only requires simple majority. All those in favor of the motion as amended, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by majority. All right, we have now come to the end of our business for today. Please, if you can, just remain in your seats for a few more minutes. I want to thank everyone for your patience, for your participation, and for the lively yet civil debate. I also want to thank again everyone who assisted with the setup of this meeting. I want to remind everyone to look at the town's website for updates on COVID-19, vacancies on town boards and committees, and other information related to town business. We always have a number of roles within the town that could use volunteers, and I encourage everyone here today to consider giving a little of your time back to the community. In particular, as I mentioned before, we now have a vacancy on the FinCom, which will be getting underway with the FY '24 budget cycle in just a few weeks, and thus could really use a new member. If you are interested, check out the town website, I think we'll have that information up on Monday, or you can reach out to Mr. Cheeseman, Mr. Purdy, or myself as we make up the appointing committee. Now, I will entertain a motion to dissolve this special town meeting. Is there a second?
Yes.
With the motion, what, you guys don't want to stay? Come on. It's such a lovely day, too. With the motion seconded, we will now take our final vote. It requires just a simple majority. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none, the motion to amend passes by unanimous vote. Today's special town meeting is now dissolved. Thank you for all coming. Please attend the master plan, open house is Thursday, and please be sure to vote in November. Thank you.